Hi Button.
Okay, so we're going to start off the meeting with the land acknowledgement and we acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the traditional on-seated territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation called Order: Declarations of Conflict of Interest. Now David, I do have one, but it's in the closed session. Do I wait till we go into the closed session to declare that? Yes, we are. I'll wait till we go into close. Okay, anyone else? Councillor Durand, I'm just going to get your button here. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you Mayor Brown. I'm in conflict with Environment and Sustainability Resolution Number One, the Highway Act of Transportation Path. So I'll have to step out there.
So you know what to do, sir. Step out when it comes to the floor and then we're ready to go. So first approval of the agenda. Now, the police chief asked if we could move number 6D Protective Emergency Services Resolution to the start because he has another function to attend, so I need someone to move that. Moved by Councillor McCabe, seconded by Councillor Durant. All in favor? Okay. And just to note, Councillor Twill's not here. Councillor Bernard, did he call in? Tracy?
Sorry.
Did he call in to say he's not going to be here?
Councillor Decker, he's on, now he's through the mountains right now, B.C.
Oh, he's in, okay. Okay, he's in the mountains. Hopefully stays away from the forest fires. Okay, so I need a motion to move into a closed session as per Section 119, subsection 1E and F of the Municipal Government Act of Prince Edward Island. E, a matter still under consideration. And F, a review of legal advice. Shellatown Air Development Corporation shareholders agreement. F, the conduct of existing or anticipated legal proceedings or the review of legal advice. 2018 affordable housing tax incentive policy and development implications. Moved by the deputy, seconded by Councillor Ramsay. All those in favor of going to the close? Okay, this shouldn't take too long.
And today, you're simply considering and voting on the motion and asking any questions in relation to the motion. So, some of those questions might be for the chief of police. But in terms of a presentation or a community plan yet, this is only council saying, we want you to create this. So, the chief of police won't have this on the spot for you today. Council first has to give the direction for that action to take place. Thank you.
Clear? Okay. Can we go with the chief? Chief, do you want to start?
Your worship, yeah, certainly. Certainly, I'm aware of our community's concern and council's concerns over safety issues in our, in our community. You know, I'm aware of this motion and I'm certainly supportive to putting a plan together to, you know, help our residents and our council certainly, you know, feel safe in their homes and their community. I think that plan will certainly involve a way to maximize police visibility in the areas impacted around the outreach center and the, and the Park Street location. We understand that those, those concerns are, are really focused and intense in those areas. So, you know, in, you know, if, when council decides if this is a necessary step, then certainly in my planning process, I will be challenging myself and my staff to do more and find a way to deliver safer environment for those who don't, don't feel safe in their neighborhoods and homes. So, certainly, as chief or, as chief, I'm certainly willing to take on that task.
Deputy, did you want to speak first?
Thank you, and thank you, Chief McConnell, for that. And just tonight, you know, for council, you'll see in your report where Cao Muhammad and I prepared where we would, we would, we would ask the police services as well as how we protect the residents of Charlestown. We did this on August fourteenth, and we're just looking that we think that it's imperative. The council has a clear picture of what is happening and how it is being addressed. So, that's kind of why we're here tonight. So, if we put the resolution on the floor, then we can ask questions of Chief McConnell.
Okay. So, do you have a resolution?
Yes, the resolution is in the package.
Okay. So, do you want to put the resolution on the floor, then we'll get discussion on it, correct? Okay. Resolution, can you read it, please?
Thank you, worship. Protective and emergency services, resolution number one. Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by councillor Ramsey. Be resolved that police services create and share with the public a community plan that addresses illicit drug use and related illegal behaviors to help residents feel safer in their homes and neighborhoods.
Okay. So, councillor Matar. Resolution's on the floor. It's on the floor.
Thank you, your worship, to the chief. I guess, you know, I just want to point out that this is a really great opportunity, you know, to address some of the problems that have been brought forward to council over the last number of months. I think we're, you know, coming up with a good comprehensive plan that allows us to ensure our communities are safe and the residents feel safe and our businesses. You know, in doing so, I, I want to make a recommendation that I think it's important to, whatever plan that is, you know, comes out of this is that residents are involved and consulted with. I believe there is a, a plan for a meeting, a public meeting on September fifth at Birchwood, which is going to address some of these concerns as well. But I think if we're getting down and putting pencil to paper and really coming up with a plan, I think it's important to involve residents within the area who have been a part of the situation, have been, you know, witness to a number of incidents and things that have occurred. I think it would bow very well for their involvement into this as well. So, I want to make that strong recommendation for the residents to be a part of any action plan and feedback in providing a go-forward plan. Thank you.
So, can I just get a clarification, deputy mayor? This is not about one specific area of the city. This is the whole city, right? So, we're talking about all neighborhoods. Okay. Okay. It's still on the, councillor Ramsey?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, and being the chair, and the chief and I chat the odd time. It's just that when residents call, the first call they should be making is to the Charlestown Police. Because they can react a lot quicker than a city councillor. And that should be the third call really on the line. Like, phone city police and say if there's a disturbance going on or whatever's going on. Because we as city councillors don't have that authority. But as long as the police has that, then they can log everything and get there sooner, you know, fast. And then things along that line. And sure, we all, we all want the emails and they all want the pictures and everything along that line. But I want to stress, your first call should be to Charlestown Police Station. Thank you very much.
Councillor Twill, first time?
Yep, thank you.
Can you stand up?
Thank you, sir. Okay, thank you. Well, some of the residents have called Charlestown Police. And they have elaborated as to what the concern is, what's happening with their respective properties. And with all due respect, everyone in this chamber and for the chief, the response they get, a lot of the times, is there's nothing we can do. There's absolutely nothing we can do. And, and the residents are left stranded. Communities are left with no protection. So, you know, a, a lot of people have given up phoning the police department, to be quite honest with you. That's the feedback I've gotten. Well, I'm just putting the cards, no, we're putting the cards on the table here, okay? We're going to hear a presentation from the chief, but, you know, how did we get here? We got here because people don't feel safe in their community. And when they have called, you know, I, I'm not sure what the strategy is. Not sure what's taken place over the last couple of years in terms of, you know, how did we respond, or when did we respond, and why did we respond? But the community feels abandoned, to be quite honest with you. So, we've got a long way to go. We've got a long way to go during the confidence back from these respective communities. And I mean, a long way to go. So, I'm, I'm interested in hearing the plan here tonight. I personally, I'd like to know why, why, why are we having a plan now? Why didn't we have a plan before? Why did the residents in this community that are paying taxes have to wait so long for a plan? Or why weren't the laws just enforced? So, you know, because it's taken up a bulk of my time. I can guarantee you that. That's what I deal with on a daily basis. People are frustrated, they're upset, and, and they truly feel abandoned. So, yeah, looking forward to the presentation.
Deputy Mary Yankoff, can you explain the resolution? Like, I, I think the resolution says the police services create and share with the public a community plan. So, he's not presenting a plan tonight. Can you clarify that?
Sure, thank you. And there might have been, maybe I wasn't clear in the beginning. But tonight is our opportunity to share with councillor, Chief McConnell, what it is we might want him to add into that plan. So, for example, I've gathered up several questions that I would, that I've shared with Chief McConnell and Cao Muhammad and his worship. And, and so it's, it's things like, you know, why, why is opening a drug usage allowed to happen? Why is there no prosecution for opening air drug usage? Regulations, regular citizens get prosecuted for being intoxicated in public from alcohol or from driving drunk, yet people using drugs get a free pass. Like, why is this? Why are laws not held to the same standard for every citizen? Why are we replicating the same policies and enforcements as San Francisco and Vancouver have done? Where they have had disastrous outcomes? And so, and part two of that would be, these approaches do not seem to work. What is going to be done to ensure the safety of taxpaying residents, long-term residents, including families, children, our marginalized citizens, seniors, newcomers, our LGBTQ community, mental health and addictions, et cetera? What bylaws need to be strengthened to ensure public safety? What role can city police play in terms of better control of the provincial outreach center, which is located in the city of Charlestown? And finally, what does police services require from council to ensure they feel supported in every, in the very important role that they play in the city of Charlestown? So, those are things that I had gathered up from myself and from residents that I would like to see as part of that. So, I think that's what we're here for. So, others should share with Chief McConnell what else they anticipate and would like to see in that report.
And councillor, Deputy Mary Yankoff, I did send an email to Police Chief McConnell and his two deputies and the Cao on my questions. And they are centered on the outreach center. How many people are currently use the facility compared to when it, when it opened a couple of years ago? What percentage of this population are seeking or could be seeking mental health services? What percentage of this population are seeking or could be seeking addiction services? Also, please break it down as it pertains to misuse of alcohol, misuse of prescription drugs such as OxyContin, Percocet and Fentanyl, misuse of illegal drugs such as heroin, cocaine, LSD, mescaline. And four, what percentage of this population go to the outreach center because of socio-economic, socioeconomic factors such as being unemployed, unhoused, or both? So, those are the questions. And as the chief said to me when I was waiting in the Parkdale Room, I can't answer them, but he will be forwarding them to the appropriate people or persons at the outreach center. Councillor McKay?
Thank you, your worship. And I think we're all concerned with the fact that we know we do have a major drug issue in our city and that we are a little bit foggy and maybe understanding what the roles of everybody and who's responsible for what. So, for me is, you know, this is a multi, this is a multi-level governmental issue. This is a society issue. This is, and we can, we're all trying to see what we can do. But what we as a city council can do is we can look at our protective services committee. That's what we're responsible for. What I'm hoping is we'll get a really big understanding about what you are facing, what you are trying to do, how we as a council can support you more in, in policing in our community so that our public feel safe and our residents feel safe. You know, we need to understand what's happening. We need to learn what we can do to support our vulnerable people, to support our businesses, to support our residents. And I think the first step is kind of what we're doing is getting out and hearing from our residents. I think that's a big, a big frustration for the residents in our city is they're really just not feeling hurt. And in order to, to validate their feelings and concerns, what you're planning to do for September fifth, it's not going to be fun. It's not going to be pleasant. But I think it's really important that they hear from you as well as we hear from them about what's happening. And then we have to really be able to, to look at what needs to happen. It's not okay what's happening. It's not okay to drive down the street and see people hurting themselves, injecting themselves. It's not fair. It's not okay. So, what, what can we do? And that's what I'm hoping to get out of some sort of report. But I need to understand what is happening in order to know how we can improve that. And our policies and our bylaws, if they're not strong enough, we have to figure out as a council how to improve that. Because without some sort of teeth behind that, we're just doing what everybody else does and blowing smoke up. Thank you.
Blowing smoke up. I like that. Councillor Dran?
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and thank you, chief, for, you know, coming forward and trying to, to develop a plan. You know, as I drive here tonight, I, I see a supervisor's vehicle and another police car at the outreach center. I see people laying down on the ground across the street at the service station. People are scared. There's young people walking by. They're scared. You can see it by the look in their face. You know, we talked last, two weeks ago about cameras being there. You know, this, this drug use is unprecedented in our city. If there's cameras there, I'm, I'm wondering, you know, could more enforcement, you know, be stepped up? To see about, you know, more charges being laid. You know, we talk about the mental health and the well-being of, of certain people, but it's the residents too that are scared to go to work, leaving youngsters in, at a, at a home, you know. I myself, I live across from a park, you know. At nighttime now, there's people staying in the park. I, I walk around. There's people under a blanket. You know, I walk the dogs early Sunday morning. There's, there's a person, you know, laying on the benches. You know, and that scares the residents. I don't know what we're supposed to do. You know, a park is there for people. I understand. You know, a park is there for people, I understand that. But does that give a right to lay on a bench all day? Or be under a blanket all day? You know, these are the questions, I guess, you know, when you do develop a report, you know. We have to explain things. And I tell my neighbors, "Just give me a call, I'll call the police, you know, if you're scared." So, this is part of a, I guess, from my way of telling you to develop a plan, that people are scared. You know, they're worried. You know, I see, you know, on videos that we asked a couple of weeks ago about some man threatening to kill another person. Well, why isn't he charged? And you can't say, "Well, his mental health." Well, you know, if that happened years ago when you were intoxicated, you'd be thrown in jail. So, I go back to, why isn't that person in jail? Is he a threat to those people? Is he a threat to society? You know, I go by there, the Outreach Center, every day or every second day. And I'm just amazed at how this can go on in this city. And, you know, I guess we have zoning there, but is it... You know, if people are actually going there to get help, that's one thing. But I've known people that struggled with mental health or drug addictions, they're not going there to get help. You know, they're hiding behind the garbage cans. And you'd be well aware of that yourself. I mean, you know certain people. It's gonna be a big, it's gonna be a big task for you, and I wish you all the best. And it's to get input from all types of society and ourselves that people feel confident of calling us and speaking for them. I mean, people are scared. It means, you know, I live in Sherwood, and people are scared to walk because you don't know where they're coming from. You know, is there people staying in the woods behind the university? Like, I can't answer those questions, people tell me that, right? So, I just hope you can sit down and get everybody's ideas and try to formulate a plan as best you can. Because we're in a real crisis now. And thanks again for coming forward. And be willing to try to take this task on. It's gonna be a big, it's gonna be a big task for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dron. Counsel Matard?
Thank you, your worship, to the chief. I think I just want to reiterate again, you know, I think it's important to, you know, as I read the resolution, there's a word, there's a key word here that I think is missing. And it's, you know, an action plan. And I think it's important that, as what comes out of this feedback to the chief through council, the emails that we've received from our residents across the city, feedback that you may receive on September 5th is that there is a comprehensive action plan that will address the issues that were faced in the city of Charlestown with illicit drug use and other unwanted behavior. You know, we can't be providing lip service here. We need to have actionable items that people are gonna trust that the city is stepping forward and actually coming up with something that will address the problems, you know, today and into the future. So, thank you for that.
Counsel Twill, the second time.
You know, Counsel Dron talks about, you know, the activities that are taking place on the property, the Outreach Center. Well, I guess a couple of questions comes to mind. Who gave the Outreach Center the authority to allow illegal drug usage on that property? Or the adjacent property? Where did that authority come from? And who gave it? Secondly, we have the distribution of drug paraphernalia on that site. Where did this authority come from? Do they have a permit? Do they have a license? Do they have insurance? Do they have support from the community? Driving around the community and handing out drug paraphernalia? Where, like, what, where's the permit? Where's discussions here around the council table? That's, you know, this is the strategy that we bought into. I don't ever recall city council buying into any strategy. So, why is this happening in this community? And why was it continuously allowed to happen? And now, I'm gonna reiterate once again. People in this community, and it's grown, you know, whether it's a five-block radius, a 10-block radius, 15-block radius, it's grown. It has grown. I got a call from a resident today, very upset. She contacted CBC, did an interview with Tony about drug usage in her neighborhood. A resident for 37 years, living in her neighborhood, and she's fed up. But that's indicative of what's been taking place in the community. And people are upset. And I agree with you, Counsel Matard. It's gotta be a comprehensive, actionable plan so people can see the results. Now, you know, regardless what that plan is, people have to see evidence-based results. This is the fork in the road. And if they don't see evidence-based results, well... You know, like I said, we got a lot of work to do. Turning back their confidence. A lot of work to do. The days of lip service, or we can't do this, or we're not allowed to do that, or, no, you don't understand. That's not why they're paying their taxes. They're paying their taxes for protectionism and to protect their properties and protect their families, protect their communities. Do you know what, folks? People won't even let their children get out of the parks. They're terrified about the needles. Look at the situation down Hillsport Park.
Counsel Twill?
Eight-year-old girl. You know, so, this is happening in our city parks. And I'll tell you another thing, too. It's affecting our city workers. Like, they're tired every morning that they have to clean up needles and clean up, you know, debris and garbage and everything else. That's not what they're getting paid for. So, all of a sudden, we've taken on responsibilities because of all these, you know, drug paraphernalia. It's all over the city. Are we sending the bill to the province? Because they've contracted it with the NGO. So, are we sending the bill to them for cleaning up the things that are happening?
Okay, Counsel Twill, we've got other speakers here.
Yeah, I understand that, Mr. Matt.
Okay, no, no, that's, no, no, you're already three minutes, four minutes into it. Like, there are other speakers here, we do have other speakers. Counsel, excuse me, Deputy Mary Ankauf?
Thank you, and this is my second time. So, I just wanted to maybe put a friendly amendment on the floor, building on what Counsel Matard said, and that we add on to our resolution that along with this report is included an action plan that goes with it. So, I would put that on the floor as a friendly amendment.
Could that be a community action plan that addresses illicit drug use? Is that what you want?
Well, I think that Counsel Matard was specifically saying, like, a comprehensive, like, a detailed, like, an action plan that goes with it. Perhaps it could be steps, I don't know what that would look like. But a commitment on our part.
So, CAO Eleanor, do you know how to put that there? That we could add it on to the... And the resolution was moved by you. And Counsel Ramsey, you all right with the friendly amendment? Now, to clarify, the friendly amendment just has to be agreed to by the mover and the seconder. Correct? I get that clarified? So, do you know how to add it to the motion? Oh, that's good, hold, 37. So, we just want to amend the friendly amendment, agreed to by the movers, seconded by the seconder, Counsel Ramsey? Don't have to vote on it separately, it'll be part of the original resolution.
Thank you, your worship. So, if we said "community action plan and key performance indicators", would that capture what you're looking for?
Okay, so, again, what is it, community?
A community action plan and key performance indicators that addresses illicit drug use and related illegal behaviors.
Performance... Counsel Beck?
I'd just say, prior to that, should it say, "with actionable items and key performance indicators"? So, the items are there, and then what's the performance indicators that are... I don't know.
Are you all right with "community action plan with key performance indicators"? Is that all right? Okay, Counsel McElair?
Yes, thank you. Just a comment in general. I don't know if this sort of data would exist. I understand CPS, you know, they get pretty good analytics. Is it possible to get a history? I know, you know, a lot of councillors or Counsel Twill certainly, there's a lot of contact, I'm sure of Counsel Matard. Is it possible to get data on some of the calls and activity that the Charlestown Police receive in terms of either locations, neighborhoods? And since these, let's take the Outreach Center and even Emergency Shelter, since they've been in place, what the activity is like, the sort of calls? Are they, in terms of trending, are they trending up, they trending down? Does that information exist? And is it something that could be shared with, I guess, council? So, we can see, I mean, we hear there's lots of calls, but I'd like to see some data, if it's available, as to what's really going on with what you're receiving. Like, you know, are the calls trending up, they trending down? The sort of calls, is that information available?
Your worship, yes, it is. We track those, we track those stats. And if I can make a comment on that point, and is... I don't think the stats would totally reflect the reality of the impact. We know that a lot of things are under-reported, and we encourage citizens to report their incidents. It's that evidence that we'll need to be successful in any action plan or key performance indicators, having the necessary resources, having the stats to justify those resources is key to any success.
And chief, just to clarify, if I call in, I know when my wife called in about an incident up on Spring Park Road, she was required to give her name, her address. I think they also asked her birth date. And then that particular crime went to court, and the person that was caught by her police services pleaded not guilty, and she was asked to testify. So, is that information required every time someone calls?
Yes, you have that standard intake policy for calls for any police service in Canada. People can make calls anonymously, but it makes it very difficult for police officers to follow through with charges if we do not have people to provide evidence through the court process.
Thank you, chief.
Okay. Question on the resolution?
Question's called, yes.
Question's called. So, CAO Eleanor, can you just read the resolution with the friendly amendment, please? You have, I have it, sorry.
Thank you, your worship, I just had to pull it up. That council direct police services, or that... How did it start again? I've got this, I've given up, thank you.
I did put it in.
Sorry, my apologies. That police services create and share with the public a community action plan with key performance indicators that addresses illicit drug use and related illegal behaviors to help residents feel safer in their homes and neighborhoods.
Those in favor, please raise your hand. Those contrary, nine zero. Okay, and Counsel Bernard, absent. Chief, thank you very much. Deputy Mayor and Counsel Ramsey, thank you very much. Thank you, council. Okay, so, we're looking at environment sustainability. Who's the vice chair? Okay, so, if you, we'll just go to the resolutions, CAO? Want to do that, Counsel McKinnon, or do you want to? Yeah, award phase three of the perimeter highway. So, Counsel Dron has claimed, or has claimed conflict of interest, so he's leaving the room. Good to go? Okay, resolution.
Thank you, your worship. Environment and Sustainability Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Counsel McKinnon, seconded by Counsel McKay. Be it resolved that city council award phase three of the Charlestown Perimeter Highway active transportation path to landmark construction at the cost of $418,078 plus HST, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called, all those in favor? Oh, Counsel McKinnon, do you have a...
I was just gonna address it, but...
You're all right? Okay, eight zero. Can you ask Counsel Dron to come back in? What's that? Okay, right on. You found him?
Thank you, your worship. Environment and Sustainability Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Counsel McKinnon, seconded by Counsel Dron. Be it resolved that city council endorse a solely city-funded private stump removal rebate program for Charlestown homeowners, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Thank you. Counsel Twill?
I'm glad to see this resolution come forward. I guess there was attempts made to have the province match the $250,000, and the province didn't come on side? Do I understand that correctly?
Not yet.
Not yet. Well, I think we need to get started. I know our residents have been asking. The question I have is, some of the residents have already went out and retained a private contractor. Well, I believe they should be eligible if they forward their invoice to City Hall to be reimbursed. I believe they should be eligible under that guise because we, you know, we've been talking about this program since the late spring. And the residents I've talked to, I said, just, you know, just bear with us, bear with us. You know, now we're going into September. So, some residents have went out and seek the private service. So, I do believe if they bring all the documentation to City Hall, that they should be reimbursed. So, I'd like to bring that forward.
Counsel McKinnon, do you want to respond?
Thank you, Counsel Twill, for your question. And I appreciate what you're saying, but at the committee, and Jessica can confirm as she wished afterwards, but the funding wasn't secured at the time for the $250,000 and, because we're waiting to see if the province was gonna come on board. I've reached out to the province, and we didn't get any feedback from them. And pretty much guaranteed that we're not going to get that, is what I've been told. So, moving forward, the committee said that anybody that applies when this is announced will be getting it. We're not going to backdate into people that have already done the work. Because the funding wasn't secured at the time. So, moving forward, the funding will be there.
So, Counsel McKinnon, do you want any backup information from... Are you all right with that?
No, if, yeah, sure.
Can she go through the manager, Jessica?
Thank you, your worship. I'll just add one point of clarification. Part of the reason that we wouldn't go backwards and reimburse people for work already done is because we're asking people to qualify. So, the contractor will have to measure the stump, determine what size it is, make sure it fits with the criteria we've developed, and make sure that it's within the guidelines. And if the work's already done, the contractor hasn't done that. So, the proposal, as written in the report, is that it would roll out when approved by council and for stumping going forward.
Counsel McCabe, I want to just go with Counsel McCabe, then you.
Thank you. And I do have, yeah, I was just questioning, so the resident would coordinate, and they'll pick a contractor? Is there a list of contractor, the contractor of choice? So, if they contract Julie McCabe, I can go out and measure the stump, take the stump out, and get reimbursed? Or do we have criteria around who's gonna come and do the stump?
So, you want to go through Counsel McKinnon to... Is that all right, Counsel McKinnon?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'd like to put a, put a, an amendment to the resolution that, that the residents, residents that did get their work done can submit an invoice and have their, have their payment reimbursed by the city. I think it's only fair. I mean, you know, they waited all summer long, and some of them, at the end, just couldn't wait any longer. So, you know, it's, 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 I, yeah, I think it's only fair. I really do. I think it's only fair. So I put that amendment on the floor.
So you're asking for a friendly amendment or amendment?
Sorry?
You're asking for a friendly amendment or amendment? Because.
An amendment. I'm asking for an amendment.
So you need someone to second the amendment?
No.
Okay. Okay, so now, let's get this straight. There's an amendment on the floor to add those residents that have already taken out the stump with, and that they're going to be part of this program, correct? Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, it should be part of the program.
So, CAO Eleanor, do we vote on the amendment first? Let's just get this straight. Don't want to get.
We can talk to the amendment.
Yeah, oh, no, no, we will, yeah. Is that clear?
Thank you, your worship. You could leave the resolution as is, because it doesn't say past or present. It just simply says that the city's going to fund a private stump removal rebate program for Charlottetown homeowners, and then there can just be a direction to administration to accept previous receipts for stumps that have been taken care of. I think the parameter, though, that should be agreed on today, that as a result of Fiona, so since Fiona happened last year, within that timeframe is when those receipts would be accepted, if that's the route we're going.
So they'd be eligible?
Yes.
Okay.
Just, just, no, hold on, hold on. Can I just get a, Counselor McKinnon, is it all right just to get a clarification from our manager?
Your worship, so this program was an idea of our committee. It was brought forward by the committee. They suggested the criteria be that it be a specific situation, so the stumps had to be of a certain size. So we don't want to give the rebate to all stumps in Charlottetown, but prioritize it because we only have so much money. If the stump is already gone, we have no way of knowing if that was a little stump, a big stump, a hazardous stump, or not a hazardous stump. So the suggestion was to do it going forward, because we'll have no way to verify that with past stumps. I'm happy to do what is directed, but that's the reason why that was laid out in the criteria.
I'm just wondering, is it the worship council just to go to vote on the amendment? The amendment of what Counselor Twill has asked?
I sit on the committee as well, right? So, you know, we, we were trying to come up with the, with a, you know, a proper way of moving forward, but, you know, there's been some huge stumps removed. So I'm just, I'm just wondering, like, if we can put that in with proper documentation? Like, if I get a quote from ABC Stump Company, and I had pictures moving back, like, three or four months ago, right? And I have pictures, and I can put in documentation, but just to say, listen, there was a tree there, they come in, you know, there's, there's got to be something more than just everybody putting it in, right? So that's why I was saying, you know, proper documentation, you know, maybe a picture or something, right? Because we're just, we were scared as a committee that the floodgates would open for every stump, every, you know, tree that had to be removed in the city, and, and the, the money would go very quickly. So, you know, there was some huge stumps that, that was, you know, cost a lot of money for certain people, and they couldn't have them. I know a guy in my ward, he, he got someone to take it out, because it was just so big, right? So, you know, we, we tried every month to see if we can get a partner with this, and delayed. As a committee, we talked about it every month. We did our best, but it was at this month, you know, winter's coming, we said, okay, let's just go with our own program and, and get going. So that's, that's all I had to say, because if we, if we agree to the amendment, if you had proper documentation, that's what.
Let's, let's, we'll vote on the amendment. Yeah, okay. Just one second. Counselor McCabe, she's got her mic there, and Deputy Mayor, what's that?
I can ask her after.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
I can ask after the resolution's on the floor.
Oh, the amendment?
Yep.
Okay. Counselor Twill?
It's not a reasonable amendment, because we were telling people that we're going to be embarking upon a program to help the residents. And we were telling them, and telling them, and telling them. So I think it's only fair. Like, if we had no, if we had no, no determination or no willingness to, to introduce a program, and looking for a funding partner, you know, it's unfortunate the province didn't come on sides to cost share of this program, but, you know, the residents, it's cost the residents a lot of money, damage from Fiona, and, you know, damage to their properties. And, and I think it's only fair, because we were broadcasting the fact that we were coming in with a program, and they waited, and waited, and waited, and some of them couldn't wait any longer. And, and I really do think, I mean, I agree with Counselor Dron, if you come in with the proper documentation, you know, some pictures to showcase what, what the, what the tree stump looked like, but I think it's only fair to all taxpayers. You know, you don't want to get into different types of, you know, who's eligible, who's not. I think it's, it's, it's a bit fairness.
Okay.
So, so I hope you'll support the amendment.
Counselor Matar, and then Counselor Beck.
Thank you, your worship. I think it, you know, going, kind of going in servicer a little bit with this, but I think in the way of looking back to retroactively, I think we do have to have some criteria. I think even if this had have been in place five, six months ago, there still would have been criteria of 30 centimeters. So if, if we could look to maybe make an amendment to the, to the, to the program, the resolution reads, just in general, there is a program. It doesn't specifically say details of that. I think we could go back and look to amend that with the committee around additional retroactive supports for people who can provide proper documentation from a reputable company where it was removed. It may be identified that it was 30, 50 centimeters wide, whatever the case may be. We can't get into individual stumps. We would be, you know, everybody was going to put one in it for, for stump removal. So I think we could probably do that without a friendly amendment. I'm just not sure what we're amending here.
Yeah, it's not a friendly amendment. It is an amendment.
It's part of the criteria. So we just have to go back to the criteria?
Yeah. Yeah, just, just one second. The amendment is to accommodate what Counselor Twill has asked, that anyone that had a stump removed, that they would be eligible for the funding. And the criteria is part of the resolution on private residential land in Charlottetown that is business, institutional rental property, over 30 centimeters in diameter, in diameter, in front yard, backyard is eligible if the stump is a hazard, all approximately pulled out of the ground, and then it says rebate detail, so.
That's all in the program detail, though, right? I think that goes into the program detail versus the resolution itself, where we should just vote on the resolution as it stands, that there is a rebate program, period. And then the administration goes back and looks to address some of the more finer detail of the program, which would include possibly retroactive pay to residents who've met a certain criteria. So I'm not sure we're voting on the criteria here tonight? Are we voting on the resolution, which just states there's a program?
We got other speakers. Are you all right?
I'm supportive of it. I just don't know what.
Counselor McKinnon?
Thank you, your worship. Just for clarification, Counselor Matar, so you asking for us to go back to committee to discuss whether we should go retroactive, or are you asking to vote on the resolution tonight, and then administration?
That would be the best option, but I think that's time-consuming as well, I think, as we're talking here, but that would certainly be, probably be the best. The best approach would be to go back to committee and take the, the information that we had here, and see if they can build in additional criteria that would fit retroactive pay. But nonetheless, we still have a resolution, it just states we have a program for a relief thing, and that's what we were, unless I'm reading and interpreting this incorrectly.
Counselor McKinnon, did you want to?
Yeah, I think we should, I don't think we should wait to go back to committee. It's just going to delay this another month.
Yeah.
I think we need to move forward, whether we come to a solution tonight or not. There is only $2,500, depending on the rebate. So if a resident has a tree that 30 centimeters or greater, up to $1,000, they get $200. If it's over $1,000, they get $500 rebate. I spoke to a resident tonight. They have two on their property, and when I told them how much the rebate was, they said they're not going to bother.
Okay.
So they're going to think about it and see. So I'm not sure, I think Counselor Twill, if we do go retroactive, but I think we do need to have criteria in place.
Yeah.
From the committee, if we can come to that tonight.
Counselor McCabe, and then Counselor Beck.
Thank you, and I am no problem supporting that we move forward with stump removal program for the city, but I would like to see criteria as well.
Yeah.
I'd like to see what the specifics are and what's required, and I'd like to see the form that goes out to the contractors, all in a nice little package, so everybody has the same opportunity. 250,000 isn't a lot of money, but it'd be nice if we have that to approve.
Counselor Beck. Okay, questions on the floor to vote on the amendment, right? Are we going to vote on the, no, you've already spoken twice. Let's vote on the amendment. Okay, all those.
Can we get a word in?
The, can you read out the amendment?
Yeah.
No, it's to, the amendment is, the amendment is to allow for any homeowner that has already removed his or her stump from his or her property will be eligible for this program. That's what it is. That's the amendment.
No, I don't think so either.
Well, that's, is that your amendment?
Well, then I won't support that.
Well, that's, that's what he moved. Seconded by Counselor, that's seconded by Counselor Dron. That's the amendment. Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, amendment, please raise your hand. All those in favor of the amendment? Okay, all those contrary? Okay, let's go back to the resolution. Can we put the original resolution on the table? Is it on there?
That was where we wanted to say. It might be allowed by retroactive. Based on criteria.
Well, but that's, that's where we're going around here, Counselor Matar. We're going around.
Can I say something?
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. That's why I put the amendment on, on the floor, so that it would give clear direction to staff, to, to, to put that in play. So, so that as long as you have the proper documentation, and it's consistent with what's in the original resolution and the criteria, it's just making them eligible. Because right now, you know, they're being penalized and, and don't have that opportunity. So it's.
Okay, no.
Well, anyway, that's, that's, that's why I put the, the amendment was to give clear direction to city staff, so that the residents that took it upon themselves to have the stump removed would now become eligible, and, use your words, retroactive, and I agree. That's why I put the amendment on the floor. That was the motivation.
Yeah, we voted, we voted on the amendment. The amendment was defeated. Let's go back to the original resolution. Counselor Beck?
Counselor Beck. Yeah, I was, because my light's on. Thank you. My idea is that, yes, we want the stump removal program, but I think we should still have to vote on the criteria. We should still see what the criteria is, which would include what Counselor Twill's wanting, which is retroactive. We should see what we are approving in a stump removal program, right? So I know it's going to take a little time, but it shouldn't take that much time. There's been discussion. It's a matter clearly outlining what the criteria of the money that we approved as a council. Bring that back to us. A quick yay, that sounds good, and off you go.
Yeah, it's, it's there.
It's there.
It's right there. Stumps, no, that's, that's the criteria. That's the criteria.
Okay.
That's it.
So where's Counselor Twill?
He put an amendment on the floor, and it was defeated. Yes, so.
That's not very clear.
Okay, okay. Counselor Beck, do you want to go?
Yeah, I think we've, we've got a limited amount of money here. We're not going to be able to satisfy all the demands that are out. I suggest that we move forward, get the stumps removed. With the amount of money that we have, we were hoping, I think the message that came back a while ago was that the program's on pause. And that was the message when I was asking Jessica questions about that, we were talking about the programs on pause. We have X amount of dollars, we, winter coming up, people have been waiting. We have criteria that's been put forth by the committee here now to get going. I think we expedite it, take care as much as we can, and exhaust that fund as quickly as, as we can, and get some support out to the, to the residents in, in Charlottetown. I guess the other question I would have is, is how does the funding, how does it work? Is it purely first come, first served? Or is it, does it go until the applications come in, and then the money is expended? So I would ask that question through the chair or through to Jessica.
Okay.
That would be my feeling.
Counselor McKinnon?
Thank you, Counselor Beck, for your question. I'm pretty sure it's first come, first served, but I'd get any clarification through Jessica.
Jessica?
Thank you, your worship. So the way it's written is that if you fit all the criteria mentioned, so the size that it is, and you have the invoice and the forms, it would be first come, first served, assuming you can show your documentation, have it signed by a contractor to say that it's a private stump of a certain size, then it would be first come, first served.
Okay. Questions called. All those in favor of the resolution? Put up your hand, please. Okay, all those against? Okay, eight one. Anyways, eight yays, one nay. Okay. Okay, do we have another resolution? Okay, so water and wastewater utility, Counselor Dron, did you want to introduce, or just go right to the resolutions?
Yes.
Oh, you want to go right to the manager?
No.
Okay. Do you want to meet them?
Thank you, your worship. Water and Sewer Utility Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Dron, seconded by Counselor Matar. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown proceeds with the procurement of utility inventory materials and accepts the bid submitted by Campbell's Concrete in the amount of $115,460.70, plus applicable taxes. And further that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question?
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor? Okay. Can you go with the next one there, please?
Thank you, your worship. Water and Sewer Utility Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor Dron, seconded by Counselor Matar. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown proceeds with the procurement of services for digester maintenance at the Charlottetown Pollution Control Plant and accepts the bid submitted by GFL Environmental Services Incorporated in the amount of $965,028.75, plus applicable taxes. And further that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. Counselor Twill? Counselor Twill's got a question for you there, Counselor.
I have a question. How long's the contract for?
Counselor Dron?
How long is it for? Well, it's till it's completed, right? Maybe I'll let the, the manager. I mean, we went out to tender.
Is there a timeline or time? Like, is it one year, two years?
Okay, just.
No, no, I'll go right to the manager.
Mr. McKeown?
Yeah, we're looking to complete it this fall.
Okay. Good. Counselor Beck, did you have a question? Can you just get your mic there?
Couple of questions.
Put your mic on.
Okay, thank you. I'm really not quite sure, I guess, what this is, first of all, be my first question about us, the digester maintenance. But it looks to me, and maybe Richard, through.
Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown proceeds with the procurement of utility inventory materials and accepts the bid submitted by Campbell's Concrete in the amount of $115,460.70 plus applicable taxes. And further that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question?
Questions.
Questions called. All those in favor. Okay. Can you go with the next one there, please?
Thank you, your worship. Water and Sewer Utility Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Counsel Duran, seconded by Counsel Matart. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown proceeds with the procurement of services for digester maintenance at the Charlottetown Pollution Control Plant and accepts the bid submitted by GFL Environmental Services Incorporated in the amount of $965,028.75 plus applicable taxes. And further that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. Counsel Twill? Counsel Twill's got a question for you there, Counsel.
I have a question. How long's the contract for?
Counsel Duran?
How long is it for? Well, it's till it's completed, right? Maybe I'll let the manager, I mean, we went out to tender.
Is there a timeline or time, like is it one year, two years?
Okay, just.
No, no, I'll go right to the manager.
Mr. McKeown?
Yeah, we're looking to complete it this fall.
Okay. Good. Counsel Beck, did you have a question? Can you just get your mic there?
Couple of questions.
Put your mic on.
I'm really not quite sure, I guess, what this is, first of all, be my first question about us, the digester maintenance, but it looks to me, and maybe Richard, through the, through Counselor Duran, Chair Duran, is there, it looks to me like when there were several items that were listed below in terms of possible actions, I, I think is what it looked like to me. Are we going to be prioritizing what should be done first? I guess would be my one question. And the other question is, it said there that it was not to exceed a million dollars in the budget, but when I look at the bill, it looks like a million.
It's two minutes.
Um, and.
Oh, nine, two minutes.
No, but it said it was not to exceed, the, the amount payable will be $1,109,000, but up there in the report, it said that the, the work would not, work in 2023 is not to exceed the $1 million budget. So the cost that was, looked like it was outlined there was $100,000 over budget, and I, just maybe if you could clarify that for me, Richard, or am I reading that wrong? Sorry, through, through the chair.
Counsel Duran, do you want to?
I'll take.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll take this one, and if I'm wrong, Richard can correct me very quickly. We went out for the digester maintenance, which comes every seven years, and there's a one and two digesters. They usually get them done every seven years, both of them. So we went out to tender, and we weren't getting much feedback or people interested in doing the work. The manager went out a couple of times, and we have one person that, that keeps coming back, GFL Environment, with a, wanting to do the work. So we had a million dollars budgeted in this budget year, and the budget came in for $2 million, but that was for both digesters. So the manager has said, well, we'll go ahead with one, at a cost of $965,000 and change, and next year's budget, we'll put it in for the second one, smaller one. But like I said, this, this has to be done every seven years, and we're right on schedule for that. But the costs keep going up, and, you know, that's why we're taking it over two budget years. So if you'd like to add anything, Manager McKeown, go right ahead.
Mr. McKeown, you all right with that? Sounds good? It's okay? Yeah? Right on. Okay, Counsel Beck?
That helps me to understand, thanks for that, Counsel Duran and Richard. Thank you.
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, nine, zero. Okay, Mr. McKeown, thank you very much. Okay. So Public Works, Counsel McCabe, do you wish to go right to the resolutions, or do you wish to make a speech or give us some highlights?
I feel like my face is turning the color of my dress because, um.
No.
No, um, no, I, there are a lot of resolutions here, there was a lot of discussion at Council Wyro, and we're all set to go, your worship.
Okay, let's go with the first one. Whoa, Tender Package C for resurfacing.
Thank you, worship. Public Works Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Counsel McCabe, seconded by Counselor McLeir. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of public tender for 2023 Street Resurfacing Package C, the submission of the Island Construction Limited in the amount of $1,098,946 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay, Counsel McKinnon?
Thank you, your worship. Now, this is great news that you found money for some extra streets. I'm just wondering if Public Works can provide me a list of streets that have been accepted for resurfacing, because the first, first two tenders come out, there was some controversy of this worst is first, and now we don't even have a list for the remaining streets, so.
Thank you, Counsel McKinnon. Counsel McKinnon, I don't think we have any place in determining worst or first as far as being elected officials. Again, I've said this all along, is our engineers have formulas, and they have the expertise to go out and evaluate what streets are worst for first. His worship actually was big in pushing for more money to put into the budget, because what we found is we're not investing enough money in our infrastructure, and by the time we get around to having to come back in 10 years or 15 years, streets are all repaired, not done properly. So we need to look, as we can move into budget time, for putting more money into, to this kind of work, so that we can stay ahead of this and try to get caught up. There is an actual list, it will be put out, and again, this would be more operationally, an operational decision. They're going to be coming back to committee to try and explain, Scott's explained a little bit already at our committee, about how they justify worst is first, and what we should do is probably have them come in and do something for all of council to hear that information, so that you can understand the processes that they use. But it's certainly not up for us to determine what streets are the worst in Charlottetown. They look at underlay, they look at, use the fancy words for me, Albert, there's lots of stuff other than just the surface of the pavement that they do use to determine what, what streets are going to be at risk for, for, for more damage. So yes, there is a list, we will get that out, we should be able to get that out, because you've just moved down your list to try and stay ahead of this, am I correct?
Okay, welcome back. Counsel Duran?
Thank you, thank you for your report, Counsel McCabe. I as well, the list. I think there was some initial minutes of your Public Works meeting in June, that we were going to go out for more money, which I certainly agree to, a lot of streets are in bad shape. So when that list came out, or from your public meetings in June, I think it was June, you know, I, I was excited, we were going to get some streets, get some more streets, I told some residents, look, your, your street's on the list now, we're, we're going down, and then when I see Tender Package C, the street's not there. So now I have to go back and tell them, you know, things have changed. So I'm just, I'm just wondering, what was the change from the initial meeting in June to where we are now? Are, are those streets, when we get the list, are they in stone? You know, can we, can we switch or ask or, you know, I know it's a worst first, but every year, I know there, there could be more potholes or shifting and, in frost, and, you know, this year, my street might be the worst, next year could be someone else, right? So I know that's a formula that, that shifts from year to year, so I was just wondering what happened since the minutes of your meeting till now, and what happened to those streets?
Counsel McCabe?
Well, I can tell you, I have no idea, because I don't have anything to do with what streets are selected for this list. I saw the list for the first time today, so I didn't even know what streets they had selected. As far as us negotiating which streets worst for first, I'd, I'd guess no, because that would be more operational and kind of going against what, what our role would be. I think you could ask questions. I think what I've been told, based on our committee, is that they're constantly evaluating the streets, because you're right, certain things can happen, whether we have a bad year or frost hits in a certain area more than others, but they have indicated that they're constantly evaluating the streets and testing the streets. Am I correct, Albert, when I say that? So again, I can't answer your question about negotiating what streets, first time I saw the list was today, and I would assume that we have to trust the smart people that are assessing and testing.
Counsel Twill, did you have something to say?
Yeah, well, for years, you know, I, I did question the criteria, because what seemed to be happening was, you know, I keep hearing, you know, worst first, and some of the streets in my ward were brutal, just brutal. I mean, especially when we did separation of the sanitary shore, stormwater, those streets have yet to be paved. So if you do a comparative analysis to other parts of the city, you know, over the years, some, some, some districts seem to have much more paving, better paving, contemporary paving, better paving, whatever you want to call it. So that's why I questioned the criteria, I was wondering if the criteria actually worked. And I certainly look forward to senior staff giving a presentation on the criteria, because I'm not so sure if it's really worst first. I think they look at the amount of traffic that's on the streets, they look at, they look at other things, and I think they use a computer, correct me if I'm wrong, Albert, to take a, take a snapshot or at a certain section of the street, as opposed to the entire street, and I stand to be corrected. But nonetheless, I, I think it's imperative that we look at that criteria, because there are certain districts in this city that, if you go through their wards, they're much better paved, and, and I have to question that. No different than the speed hubs. Now, how is it that, that some wards have all kinds of speed hubs, two and three in each street, and yet, when you try to get one of your residents to fill out a form, they're being denied?
Let's just stick to the tender, stick to the tender.
Just wanted to bring that forward, because I believe, I've said it before and I'll say it again, I believe the city should be treated equally and fairly, so we can provide services right across the board. Thank you.
Equally, fairly, and equitably. Equally, fairly, and equitably. Chair?
Public Works with us, you, you did hear kind of the brief overview, overview from our manager, and we're all excited to hear a little bit more detail about how, how they come to the determination of doing that. So what we'll do is, we will ask him sometimes do a presentation for all of council. Thank you.
Counsel McKinnon?
Thank you, your worship. I just had a quick look at the list that was handed down here, and I don't support this resolution, because we, I was told that there was an assessment done this year of the streets. We're still waiting to see what that assessment was, to see what the worst is first that have come through. I have asked, when this initial tender went out to package, there's a street in my subdivision that's getting beat up with a new development that's happening with a nearby subdivision, Hidden Valley, trucks are traveling it every day. Residents have come to me and said, why are we going to waste our money? Paving a street, it's a long section, that's going to get beat up really bad, right after they finish paving it. Save the money, get this area developed, pave it next year. I did ask this, I asked the manager of Public Works for this, he said he would look into it, but the street is still on the list, so I will not support the resolution. Thank you.
Okay, well, we can shift that, get that street down there, will you?
Well, I would say that they wouldn't be paving any street where there's construction, that's usually the reason they don't pave. So maybe, Albert, you could have someone have a look at that.
Yeah.
If that's what's happening, because I know that streets in my ward have been deferred for eight years while they do construction up on Montgomery Heights.
Okay. Okay, Counsel McKinnon, second time?
Yeah, no, it was, it was brought to the manager of Public Works, he said he was going to look into it, have his team look into it, it's still on the list, so I, I would love to see this removed, deferred for a year, two years, until construction slows down in, in this nearby development that's being built.
Well, we can shift that somewhere else.
Sorry. Manager?
I'll take one.
Okay. Yep, yeah, no, no. Yep.
I said first. Burndale.
Burndale is. Question?
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hands. All those against? Eight, one. Okay, next one, please.
Thank you, your worship. Public Works Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Counsel McCabe, seconded by Counselor McLeir. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of public tender for East Royalty Road Multi-Use Pathway, that the submission of Burt and McKay Backhoe Services Limited in the amount of $1,146,655.49 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
This is a good project. Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Right on. Okay, nine, zero.
Thank you, your worship. Public Works Committee Resolution Number Three, moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor McLeir. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public tender for Terry Fox Drive Lighting, the submission of Hanson Electric in the amount of $159,700 plus applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called?
Questions called.
Okay, all those in favor? Nine, zero. Okay. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, worship. Public Works Committee Resolution Number Four, moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor McLeir. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public tender for Street Rehabilitation Eastern Gateway Phase One, the submission of Birch Hill Construction Limited in the amount of $7,084,238 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the Public Works portion of the contract is estimated at $4,313,280, while the utility portion is estimated at $2,779,10, and further that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay, Counsel Twill, Counsel Ramsey, Counsel Beck. Counsel Twill?
Thank you. At the Public Works Committee, I moved the deferral, and the reason why I moved the deferral was, I, I wanted to hear what the concerns were from the construction industry, people who move the aggregate from the waterfront out to their respective industrial properties. And I, I've yet to see the information, I asked for the minutes of the meeting, this is $7 million expenditure. I'm not saying I'm opposed to the project, but it is affecting, this, this new road that's being constructed is affecting the construction industry, it's affecting, affecting some of the businesses that are in that community. I know meetings have taken place individually and collectively, you know, we don't have, we don't even have a thumbnail sketch as to what those issues are. And I think, you know, when you're spending $7 million, that's a lot of money. I, I, I thought the deferral would have been good, at least give us two or three weeks to, to hear what, what the, what the concerns are, what, what their recommendations are, because they're on these roads every day of the week, that's how they make their living, 7:24 around the clock. And with all due respect to the committee, I, I would like to move a deferral, so that we can at least get that information from the construction industry, as well as the, the businesses in that area. I really think we need to know what their concerns are, and, and I, I don't think that is an unreasonable request, you know, they play a major role in the economy in this city and this province, so I, I think we should hear them out. Thank you.
Okay, could I just, just deal with the deferral, Madam Chair? So, deferral moved by Counsel Twill, seconded, needed a seconded. Counsel Duran, okay, so we have to speak to the deferral first. Counsel McCabe, it's your.
So thank you, and yes, Counsel Twill was a great advocate for the trucking industry and businesses along the gateway, for sure. I just want to remind everybody here, this gateway project was approved in 2011. So this is when this project started, we're in 2023, we're ready to move with it. Because the staff is outstanding, and they left our meeting, they went back because Albert was here as a representative, as our manager was away, and was able to gather that although this new route is going to be a little longer, it's 190 meters, it's anticipated that the new, new design route is going to be, result in shorter travel time for our truckers, it's estimated the travel time through the intersection will go from six minutes to three minutes. Currently, there can be a relatively long wait at these lights. This information has been shared with the Harbor Authority, as well as members of trucking industry, who are quite pleased with these results. Albert, is there anything you'd like to add to that piece? Because I know that was a big part for, for Counsel Twill. There has been discussion, there has been follow-up, there has been information shared, everybody's on board. This, again, guys, is, is a project that's already developed. The province, they're going ahead with their second part, we're only looking at phase one. We need to get the tender out to start to do this work, in order to make sure that we are doing what we need for this plan to be effective. It's, it's going to be really, really well done, it's a joint project with utility as well as with Public Works. And it, it's time to move on this. And there has been discussion, there's been discussion with the chief engineers of the province, there's our engineering department here at the city, and it's, people are, are hearing, working, and collaborating to ensure it's the best we can do for this area.
Counsel Ramsey?
Thank you for that, Counsel McCabe. Out of the $7 million, is, that's not all the city's cost, it's a three-way partner, correct?
We're receiving quite a bit of money from ISAP funding, I think, what does it work out for us? 1 point?
1.7 million.
1.7 million, is it, Albert, or?
It's in the PAC.
It is, I can't, I don't have it right up in front of me, but we.
Yeah, I got it, I just found it here in my package.
Three-level government project.
No, I just found it, thank you.
And, and again, it was approved as part of the master plan in 2011.
Yeah. Counsel McCabe, sorry, Counsel Beck, and Mr. Coaster?
Just clarification, the utility is maritime electric you're referring to?
What's that?
In the, in the motion, it says the utility, that's maritime electric we are referring
And, and again, it was approved as part of the master plan in 2011.
Yeah. Councilor McCabe, sorry, Councilor Beck, and Mr. Coaster?
Just clarification, the utility is Maritime Electric you're referring to?
What's that?
In the, in the motion, it says the utility? That's Maritime Electric we are referring to?
No, that's our utility.
Or our utility?
That's water and wastewater.
Wasting, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I, I wasn't sure. I guess if someone was reading that, they may not know what utility you're referring to, so...
Council, Councilor McCabe, you made, you made reference to the, the report, and on August 8, 2011, moved by Rob Lance, Councilor Rob Lance, seconded by Councilor Cody, that the Eastern Gateway Waterfront Master Plan be accepted, be accepted as a strong and clear framework to help guide future development, public capital projects, and private development decisions for the Eastern Gateway, Eastern Gateway area of the city of Charlottetown. Councilors Rice, Lance, Twill, McFagin, McDonald, Flurd, Hilton, and Bernard voted for it, and there was one absence, Councilor Redmond. So it went nine zero. And you get the report there, right? Yeah. Councilor McCabe, did you want to say anything else on it, on the deferral?
I think we already voted. Did we vote on the deferral yet? Oh, let's vote on this deferral.
No, no, Councilor Twill has a second. Councilor Twill?
Want to thank you for the history lesson, Mayor Brown?
No, it's not history lesson, it's history. It's fact.
I know, but it's a history lesson.
Yeah, it's fact.
So, 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 I mean, you're talking about a conceptual design, and it's a plan. Okay? Now we're getting down to the nuts and bolts, right? And, and I don't think it's an unreasonable request to hear from the construction industry. I mean, I, I ran, I've run into some of the members of the construction industry in passing, you know, and, and they had a lot of concerns, and I said, well, what discussions are taking place? Well, we've talked with senior management. And, and as, as a member of the Public Works Committee, if, if you're going to be voting or on a motion to bring forward to, to, to council, I, I think we need to be aware of all of those, all those concerns, and, and some, some of the struggles and challenges that they're dealing with. Again, I didn't say I was against it, I just felt at the committee level, this should have been discussion. And, and there was no discussion on, on what the industry is facing or will be facing, not just the construction industry, but we have a lot of commercial businesses down on the waterfront, you know, Mr. Murphy's another, and how, how it affects him in terms of the left-hand term and whatnot. And I just thought, I just thought it would be advantageous for the committee to hear those, those concerns. That was the motivation behind the deferral. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Councilor McCabe, you want to follow up? Sure, go ahead.
We talked about the deferred intersection, that, that would be the province's part of the project, so that is nothing to do with what we're approving here tonight. So if there's more concerns and further discussion, that can still happen, they're not at that point of the project yet. We're talking about the phase one, that we need to get moving so that they're going to do their work anyway, we need to have our work done.
It's, it's a great report, it's on our, it's on our website, too. Lots of good information. Question called? The deferral, deferral. Question called for the deferral? Okay. All those in favor of the deferral, please raise your hand. Okay. All those against? Okay, eight one against deferral. Okay, let's go to the resolution. Uh, question called? Questions called. All those in favor of the resolution? Oh, okay. All those against? Eight one. Okay. 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 Want to read the next one there, Counselor? Shouldn't say Counselor, CAO?
Thank you, your worship.
CAO, CAO Eleanor Mohammed?
Yes. Thank you, sir. Public Works Committee Resolution Number Five, moved by Councilor McCabe, seconded by Councilor McLeir. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public tender for two 2023 half-ton crew cab four-by-four work trucks, the only bid of reliable motors in the amount of $133,172 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. All those in favor? Please raise your hand. Nine zero. Thank you. Next resolution, please.
Thank you, your worship. Public Works Committee Resolution Number Six, moved by Councilor McCabe, seconded by Councilor McLeir. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the request for quotes for two 2023 Ford Lightning half-ton crew cab electric trucks, the bid of fair aisle Ford in the amount of $76,140.25 per vehicle, less federal rebate of $5,000 and provincial rebate of $5,750 per truck, plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Councilor Duran, Council, and Deputy Mayor Yankop. Councilor Duran?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I'm just wondering, someone mentioned it the other day, that, you know, they see an awful lot of new trucks, and, and I said, well, we're on a program now that we're, we're replacing trucks rather than, you know, 15 years old. So is this part of a program, or are we in a program that we do, you know, turn trucks over and things like that? It's just that there's a lot of new trucks on the go, right? So...
Councilor McCabe?
I'm just trying to think of how to answer that, because I think part of when we came out of the contract with Enterprise at that time, we said we were going to always be trying to get ahead, so we wouldn't be ending up with cars that weren't worth anything in the end. And I think these were approved by Councilor Duran a while ago, if I think. I think it was just having to come through this time to try and get the bids out. We're still struggling to get people to actually tender and bid on some of our trucks and stuff. So we're trying to improve and look at things all the time and how we can better, better some of that processes. And I know that there was going to be some more discussion with even our friends at the Automobile Association to make sure that we're, we're doing everything well, to make sure we stay ahead, less maintenance.
Good. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I just wanted to comment, it was just nice to see a local business was the successful bidder, and so it's just nice to see that from one, when we, when we came out of our contract with the fleet management program, and it's, it's just my comments, nice to see hopefully more of our local, uh...
Dealers.
Dealers, right, will continue to bid on these, on our fleet. Thank you.[1712.54]